The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
We have a special town meeting tonight for our regular town council meeting, so we'll start with that. So I'm going to call this special town meeting to order. And the first thing we need is a election of a...
Excuse me, but...
Yeah.
We gotta leave?
You gotta leave.[46.82][46.82](laughing)
Huh?
You're supposed to be down here.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
That's right, I forgot that. We haven't done this in a long time, huh? All right, well, we'll do that, that's okay. Come down there. Just make sure I have everything we need, right? Okay. Okay, so, what do we do? Read it then? I'm stay there, right? I'm moderator?
You're staying up here, you're going to be the moderator.
Am I going to be the moderator? Okay, they have to nominate me the moderator, right?
Yep.
So that's where I was headed.
You were told to.
I was headed there.
I like that.
Okay, so, we need the election of a moderator. Nominations from the floor? Okay, do we have any other nominations? Hearing none, nominations are closed. So now we have our town meeting procedures, our eligibility to vote. Any person who is an elector of such town and any citizen of the United States of the age of 18 years or more, who jointly or separately who is liable to the town for taxes assessed him or her on an assessment of not less than $1,000 on the last completed grand list of such town. So, you going to read the legal notice, yeah?
Yes. A special meeting of the electors and citizens qualified to vote in town meetings of the town of Berlin will be held at the Berlin Town Hall, Council Chambers, 240 Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut on Tuesday, July 25, 2017, at 6:45 PM for the following purposes. Number one, to obtain approval of the non-budgeted appropriation of outside police services in the amount of $38,522 and appropriate to extra duty police officer expenditure account. Number two, to obtain approval to transfer $1,661.83 from school, from, I'm sorry, nursing, summer field trip revenues to summer programs field trip expense due to the increase of numbers of the Board of Education field trips dated at Berlin, Connecticut, the 17th day of July 2017. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. So now we have the first resolution to come before our town meeting. So, you want to read the first one? Yeah.
Resolved that an appropriation as requested by the interim town manager in accordance with section 7-10 of the Berlin Town Charter of outside police services in an amount of $38,522 appropriate for the extra police officer expenditure account.
Thank you, we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, do we have any discussion on this resolution? Anyone? Seeing no discussion, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of this resolution? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so moved. And now our resolution number two.
Resolved that an appropriation as requested by the interim town manager in accordance with section 7-10 of the Berlin Town Charter of $1,661.83 from nursing summer field trip revenues to the summer programs field trips expense due to the increase of the number of ordered field trips.
Okay, thank you, we have a second on that? Any discussion? Yes.
Is this for the board of head members to take field trips?
Um, good question. I thought I read, I thought it was for the nurses, but I could be wrong. Yeah, right?
It's for the nurses, to be honest.
I think it's for the nurses. Yeah, come on up.
It's for the nurses to be at the field trips for the kids during the summer.
Thank you. Good. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved. So that's our final resolution, so there being no other business before the town meeting, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Meeting is, all those in favor? Aye. Meeting is adjourned, thank you. Okay, it's a couple minutes early, but you know, we got a long agenda, so let's go ahead and start. I'm going to call this town council meeting to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilor Campanelli?
Here.
Councilor Evans?
Here.
Councilor Kuzinski?
Here.
Councilor Pinesa?
Here.
Councilor Bichette?
Here.
Councilor Russell?
Here.
Mayor Houghorn?
Thank you. Okay, we'll start, we have some proclamations tonight, which is always a fun time, that people can make it, and we love to present these proclamations. Is there somebody here from the Cabaret Theater tonight? If not, that's okay, we'll work on that. I know, I know they already have it, so I'll, I'll be speaking to them, I'm probably going to go there and see them at a show, so we'll talk to them shortly. And we have the Shadow Meadow, obviously Country Club here, representatives, we appreciate you guys being there. I'm going to read the proclamation, then we'll step over to the podium, and I can present it to you. So we have a proclamation for the Shadow Meadow Country Club, "Whereas 2017 marks the 100th anniversary of Shadow Meadow Country Club, which was established in 1917, designated in the Scottish tradition by Willie Park Jr., known as the man who brought golf to the world, and a member of the World Golf Hall of Fame. It was founded in, and founded in 1899 after the serious consideration of bringing golf to New Britain by civic leaders including Stanley, Corbin, Smith, Hart, Pease, Talcott, Landers, Booth, Moore, and Baldwin." I guess a list of really all the manufacturers there, right? Pretty impressive in New Britain, back in the day. "Only 10 years after the first Hickory Golf Clubs arrived in America, these captains of industry realized a nine-hole club on leased land after only 56 days of construction. The club became an early leader, co-founding the Connecticut State Golf Association, which was the nation's first state golf association during Horse and Buggy, Gaslamp America. And in 1910, property in Kensington was proposed to move the club to improve course conditions and accommodate improvements and expansion. In 1916, Willie Park Jr. collaborated with Kenneth Murchinson, an architect of other club facilities, enjoyed by discerning families such as the Astors and Vanderbilts, and presented and gained board approval for a spectacular golf course and clubhouse layout. In 1917, the founders' vision of golf materialized with a new club in Kensington, which was renamed from the Country Club of New Britain to the Shadow Meadow Club. The original and elegant clubhouse remains to this day, steeped in history and unlike so many others. And with 35 British and U.S. Open championships amassed on the nearly 400 natural acres, it is considered one of the most beautiful and traditional golf and country clubs anywhere. Bobby Jones once said that the 14th hole was among the 18th prettiest he had ever played. With the, with the range of golf and social membership opportunities available, many golfers, tennis players, swimmers, walkers, diners have and will continue to enjoy the relaxed, family-friendly, country club atmosphere for many years to come. Now, hereby resolved, I, Mark H. Kuzinski, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Berlin, Connecticut, do hereby congratulate Shadow Meadow Country Club on their 100 years of providing a beautiful, traditional club in a relaxed, family-friendly atmosphere for patrons near and far dated this 8th day of July 2017." So, if you'd like to come up here, my pleasure to present this to you. Congratulations on 100 years.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.[380.14][380.14](applause) We hope there's another 100 years or more. Glad you're part of our town.
Yes, we're very glad to be part of the town.
Good.
Look for another 100 years of good time.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good luck, thanks.[389.14][389.14](applause) Okay. We have another proclamation tonight. You'll be hiding in the back there, I see you. This proclamation is for our fire chief, Jim Simons, upon his retirement from the Berlin Volunteer Fire Department. Let me read a few words, Jim, and then please come up, and I can present it to you. There's not too much else to say after your party, but you know, we threw in a few things here. During his 24 years as fire chief, Jim served the citizens of Berlin by responding to fires, automobile accidents, hazardous material incidents, carbon monoxide alarms, propane leaks, storm damage incidents, lost person searches, remaining on call 24 hours a day. As a lifelong resident of Berlin, he continued a long legacy of firefighters from the Simons' family, having both his father and uncle serve as the chief of the Berlin Volunteer Fire Department. Jim joined the department while a senior at Berlin High School in 1979, not to give away your age, and worked up, worked his way up the ranks from firefighter to lieutenant, captain, assistant chief, and finally chief of the department, before announcing his retirement from the position at the end of 2016. In addition to his firefighting knowledge and years of experience, his success has also been the result of strong management and communication skills. In addition to managing a fire scene, Chief Simons was able to challenge his officers and firefighters to be prepared for anything that came their way, and continuously strive to be at the top of their game by knowing the strengths and limitations of each individual. In recognition of his years of service to the town of Berlin, and the many contributions he has made to improve the quality of life for many of our townspeople, the town council hereby salutes Fire Chief James Simons and extends best wishes for a long and happy retirement. Of course, I know you're really not going anywhere other than out of this job, so we're happy you're still with us at the town, dated this 25th day of July 2017. So Jim, come on up, give this proclamation. Congratulations. You don't want the Cabaret Theater one, I honestly...
Maybe he can sing.
Hey, congratulations, you know, like I said, I think I said at your retirement, there's nothing like the heart of the volunteer, and you know, we're very happy to have obviously you as a former chief, and all those years you put in, it's very impressive, and of course, all the volunteer firemen in town, we certainly couldn't have a safe community without you, so we obviously salute all of you, but certainly Jim, on your retirement, we appreciate all those years of service, and that you made it through them safe, and you're here to talk about it, and we look forward to working with you in the future, so congratulations. Thank you.[434.14][434.14](applause) Okay, next we have, in our town meeting, we have our audience of citizens, so this is the time, if anyone wishes to speak to the council about anything, whether it's on our agenda or not, you are certainly welcome to come up to the microphone, please have to come up unfortunate to the front, and state your name and address, and, yeah, who do we have? Yes, first up. Come on up. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, my pleasure.
Hi, Barbara Garmotz, 24 Sterling Drive, Kensington. I'm here tonight to speak about the library elevator project. Can't hear me, okay. This is a very important project for our library in our town, for the handicapped, for the people that are disabled, they cannot get into the library the way, even the handicaps places are up top, so to come down with a rollator, or a cane, or a walker is very dangerous. So I would like to see this project go forward, this elevator project, it's been a long time in coming, and I think that this is something that is very, very important to the town. So I have, if we have any, and I have letters from people who can substantiate this, how important this is. And when you go to the library, and you go to the front door, the door is open electronically, it's a very welcoming atmosphere, but it doesn't matter if you can't get in the building. So I just hope that this project goes forward, and I just want to mention that we are also not in ADA compliance at that project. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Uh, yes?
Carol Renary, 25 Renee Drive. I just want to reiterate what Barbara said. If any of you have had knee problems, hip problems, anything, I have had knee surgery, and I can tell you, just the slightest grade over there was so difficult to maneuver. I also do not feel we are in compliance, not there, I don't feel we're in compliance at the senior center either, where there's not an access to the front door, where people have to walk with their walkers all the way around. That elevator is desperately needed, and I too have heard from many, many people how difficult it is. The library's a wonderful place, we want people to continue to come, it offers such great services, so please, think of funding the extra money that is necessary for that elevator. Thank you.
Thanks. Yes, sir?
Sam LaMaglio, 78 Hickory Hill Road. I came here to talk about the potential development of Farmington Avenue, and I want the council to tread very slowly on it, because I feel that we first have to address the police station problem before we even think about doing Farmington Avenue, because we bought that property specifically for the police station. Now, I know it went to referendum, and it failed, and it probably failed for a lot of reasons. It was a $20 million project, it was at the same time as the school project was going on, and people in town didn't really know what our final cost was at the high schools, so people were a little skeptical, and they voted against the police station. They didn't vote against not doing the police station, I think they voted against funding that project at certain ti, at that time, but not at the high schools complete. We know what our final cost is, we know what our bond and obligations are. I think we should go back and look at that police station. The police commission with the chief of police did a wonderful job getting it down to approximately 16 million, maybe they can do it for a little less, but I think we should give the people in town the opportunity to vote on that police station, once and for all, and if they decide they don't want it on that property, then the town, the town council can move forward in doing whatever you want to do on development. But that property was specifically bought, it was cleaned for the police station, and I just don't think it's right that we just ignore the fact that we made a promise to the community that we were going to put it on Farmington Avenue. Also, I think if we do do an expansion at the town hall, we've got a lot of uncertainties, we don't know what, if we have to remodel this town hall, we don't know if the Board of Education's going to move, we don't have any final cost, so I think it's important that the council address the police issue first, and then move on on this development on Farmington Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Once, twice? Three times? Okay, that closes the audience of citizens, just, just a note on the, we'll be, we'll be talking about it, about the Farmington Avenue development on our agenda later, so we can address some of those concerns and issues, so that's, we will talk about some of that tonight. Okay. Next is our consent agenda, so if we've all read it, fellow councilors, we can take a motion on it?
Make a motion to accept the items on the consent agenda in front of us tonight?
Second on that? Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved. Okay. This brings us to a, our second public hearing tonight, so we have a public hearing on our, our ordinance for Zippadelli Field. That's the purpose of this, we're going to meet tonight, and we have an ordinance appropriating $98,000 for the renovation of Zippadelli Baseball Field, and authorizing the issue of $98,000 worth of bonds of the town to meet said appropriation, and pending the issuance thereof, making temporary borrowings for such purpose, so, legal notice? Or maybe that was the legal notice, huh?
Yeah, that's...
That's kind of, suffice for that, okay, good. So, this is a public hearing, the public hearing is open at this time, so this would be the time that if there's anyone in public here that wants to speak about the baseball field, and before we close that hearing tonight, now would be the time. All right. Seeing no one, I will close that section, public comments, and now we have town council comments. Anyone from the council wish to speak? Yes, Charlie?
I'd like to say, I'm probably the last guy to want to spend money on the council, but this is an important project, and it's a matter of safety for the kids, and it's been neglected maintenance, so I'm going to support this.
Okay, great, thanks. Anyone else? Yes?
Yeah, just to echo Councilman Pinesa's comments, this is long overdue, I think it's 20 years since we've had any upgrade, and as Charlie said, it's a safety issue.
Yes?
I just also want to add, this is one of the very few things that we had in our budget, it was a little bit over what we had in our budget, and Kevin worked hard to try and reappropriate some money, so we can't get this done without raising anybody's taxes, so I am in favor of this.
Okay, yeah, same here, I mean, it's one of the few capital projects that we actually approved this budget year in order to try and keep our spending as reasonable and responsible as possible, but we understood, you know, about the field, and we heard, you know, from several people, many people, about the condition of it, we know we don't want our athletes to be injured, and the field, again, we know it's, it's, it's time to fix it, so that's the reason why we're here, and we were glad that Mr. Laney's, yeah, some of the money was repurposed for some of this, so that's, that's all the better, so. All right, so, no other comments from the council, I will close the public hearing at this time, and we will now move on to item number one on our new business.
Okay, Mayor, I'd like to just make a clarification, that item 17 was removed from our agenda, and I'd like to make a motion to replace that topic with the one that was in front of us, and make that number 17.
On the brown field?
On the brown field, grants.
Okay, so the old 17's out, right? The new 17's in? Okay. For later, we'll get there later. Okay, second on that?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay, so, so moved.
While we're doing procedural stuff, I was just thinking it might be easier to move topic three up to topic two, just switch two and three. Because it's talking about Zippadelli Baseball Field.
Oh, yeah, okay, sure.
So maybe it's easier just doing together?
Sure.
All right, so I'd like to move that we switch topic two and three on the agenda under new business.
Okay, second on that?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved. Okay. So with that, number one.
Okay, agenda item number one is to authorize issuance of $98,000 for the renovation of Zippadelli Baseball Field, and issuing the bonds to cover the set appropriation. It's also requesting that you waive rule seven of the town council rules and procedures so that you can act on this tonight.
Okay, great, thanks. So we have two different, two different motions.
I move to waive rule seven of the town council rules and procedures.
Second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? But the only, typically what we do, a lot of times when we close a public hearing, we have a public hearing tonight, we wait just another couple weeks till our next council meeting, just to let things think, sink in, and just see if there's any other, you know, issues that may arise before we actually vote on it. Tonight, we're not going to do that, we, you know, hopefully we'll all vote to waive that motion, because first of all, we have no meetings in August, so we don't want to let the thing, this item linger till September, and we want to make sure that they can start what they have to do there before it gets too late in the season, so. Hearing no other comments, motion on the floor, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved. Number two motion?
Okay, move to adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Appropriating $98,000 for the renovation of Zippadelli Baseball Field, and authorizing the issue of $98,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriation, and pending the issuance thereof, making temporary borrowings for such purposes."
Okay, thank you, second on that?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? I think we've talked about it, and said enough about it, and we're glad that it's before us, so, hearing, hearing nothing further, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, so moved.
Okay. Agenda item number two is from public grounds, it's for the repair and reconstruction of Zippadelli Baseball Field. There was one, they sent out the bid, it was one sole bidder, Sports Turf Specialist, and they're requesting approval up to, not to exceed $95,000. The bid price from was $84,022, the others, the remaining amount is for contingency for the reconstruction of the field.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion on this?
Okay, move to authorize the interim town manager, Jack Healy, to enter into a contract with the sole bidder, Sports Turf Specialties, Inc., for the repair and reconstruction of Zippadelli Baseball Field.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved. Okay, great.
Agenda item number three is to request authorization to issue the developer RFQ document for 889-903 and 913 Farmington Avenue. This has been brought before you before, there's been a group that put together an RFQ for seeking a proposal from developers for the development of the area along Farmington Avenue. Chris Edge is here to answer any questions, or go further into details on the RFQ.
Okay. Sure, just wanted to pass something along, since the last meeting, we had made some slight modifications to the RFQ, particularly with the items discussed on the Boulevard. I'll wait till those come around, and I'll quickly go through what those changes were. So the changes on the RFQ are on page four, five, and nine, I'll let you each take a look at that briefly. Essentially what it is, is basically saying that the Boulevard can be part of the process if the developer chooses, instead of saying it must be there, so take a look at the language, I'll have any, answering questions you have, but just wanted to pass that along to you, because those were concerns expressed at a previous meeting.
I like the red lines, thank you, much appreciated. And, one question.
Yes, yes.
Did the town attorney review the changes, and everything's good so far, or?
I don't believe the town attorney took a look at the changes, they were pretty much just modifications on what was existing there. We can definitely run it by them to make sure, but it's largely language changes, but I'll make sure I do run it by court counsel.
Chris, did you hear about something different tonight?
Sorry, let me get a copy of this. I believe it's the same one, but it actually shows changes in red lines.
Thank you, Chris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. Okay. This brings us to a, uh, our second public hearing tonight. So we have a, uh, public hearing on our, um, our ordinance for, uh, Zippadelli Field. That's the purpose of this. We, uh, we're gonna meet tonight and, uh, we have an ordinance, uh, appropriating ninety-eight thousand for the renovation of Zippadelli Baseball Field and authorizing the issue of ninety-eight thousand dollars' worth of bonds of the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, making temporary borrowings for such purpose. So, um, legal notice? Or maybe that was a legal notice, huh?
Yeah, that's-
That's kind of-
Yeah.
Suffice for that? Okay, good. Uh, so, this is a public hearing. The public hearing is open at this time, so this would be the time that if there's anyone, uh, in public here that wants to speak about the baseball field and, and before we, uh, close that hearing tonight, now would be the time. All right? Seeing no one, I will, uh, close that section, public comments, and now we have town council comments. Anyone from the council wish to speak? Yes?
I'd like to say I'm probably the last guy to want to spend money on the council, but this is an important project and, uh, it's a matter of safety for the kids and it's been neglected maintenance, so I'm gonna support this.
Okay, great. Thanks. Anyone else? Yes?
Yeah, just to echo, uh, Councilman Finesse's comments, uh, this is long overdue. Uh, I think it's twenty years since we've had any upgrade and, uh, as Charlie said, it's a safety issue.
Yes?
I just also want to add, this is one of the very few things that we had in our budget. It was a little bit over what we had in our budget and Kevin worked hard to try and re-appropriate some money, so we can't get this done without raising anybody's taxes. So I'm in favor of this.
Okay, yeah. Uh, same here. I mean, uh, it's one of the few capital projects that we actually, uh, approved this budget year in order to try and, uh, keep our spending as, uh, reasonable and responsible as possible. But we understood, you know, about the field and we heard, you know, from several people, many people, about the condition of it. We, we know we don't want, uh, our athletes to be injured and the field, again, we, we know it's, uh, it's, it's time to fix it, so that's the reason why we're here and we were glad that, uh, Mr. Delaney's, yeah, some of the money was repurposed for some of this, so that's, uh, that's all the better. So. All right, so, no other comments from the, um, council. I will close the public hearing at this time. And we will now move on to item number one on our new business.
Okay, Mayor, I'd like to just make a clarification that item seventeen was removed from our agenda and I'd like to make a motion to replace that topic with the one that was in front of us.
Okay.
And make that number seventeen.
On the brownfield?
On the brownfield grants.
Okay, so the old seventeen's out, right? The new seventeen's in? For later, we'll get there later. Okay, uh, second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, so moved.
While we're doing procedural stuff, um, I was just thinking it might be easier to move topic three up to topic two, just switch two and three. Cause it's talking about Zippadelli Baseball Field.
Oh, yeah, okay, sure.
So maybe it's easier just doing together.
Sure.
Alright, so I'd like to move that we switch topic two and three on the agenda under new business.
Okay, second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so moved. Okay. So, with that, number one.
Okay, agenda item number one is to authorize issuance of ninety-eight thousand dollars, uh, for the renovation of Zippadelli Baseball Field and issuing the bonds to cover the said appropriation. It's also requesting that you waive rule seven, uh, of the town council rules and procedures so that you can act on this tonight.
Okay, great. Thanks. Um, so we have, uh, oh, two different, two different motions.
I move to waive rule seven of the town council rules and procedures.
Second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? But the only, typically what we do, a lot of times when we close a public hearing, we have a public hearing tonight, we wait, um, just another couple of weeks till our next council meeting, just to let things think in, sink in and just see if there's any other, you know, issues that may arise before we actually vote on it. Tonight, we're not gonna do that. We, you know, hopefully we'll all vote to, to waive that motion because first of all, we have no meetings in August, so we don't want to ma- let the, uh, thing, uh, this item linger till September and we want to make sure that they can start what they have to do there before it gets too late in the season, so. Hearing no other comments, motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so moved. Uh, number two motion?
Okay, move to adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Appropriating Ninety-Eight Thousand Dollars for the Renovation of Zippadelli Baseball Field and Authorizing the Issue of Ninety-Eight Thousand Dollars Bonds of the Town to Meet Said Appropriation and Pending the Issuance Thereof of Making Temporary Borrowings for Such Purposes."
Okay, thank you. Second on that?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? I think we've, uh, talked about it and, uh, said enough about it and, uh, we're glad that it's before us, so. Hearing, hearing nothing further, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so moved. Thank you.
Um, agenda, uh, agenda item number two, um, is from public grounds. It's for the repair and reconstruction of Zippadelli Baseball Field. There was one, uh, they sent out the bid. It was one sole bidder, Sports Turf Specialist, and, uh, they're requesting, uh, approval up to, not to exceed ninety-five thousand dollars. The bid price from, uh, was eighty-four thousand and twenty-two dollars. Um, the others, the remaining amount is for contingency for the reconstruction of the, of the field.
Okay, we have a motion on this?
Okay, move to authorize interim town manager, Jack Healy, to enter into a contract with the sole bidder, Sports Turf Specialties, Inc., for the repair and reconstruction of Zippadelli Baseball Field.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so moved. Okay, great.
Agenda item number three is to, is, um, request authorization to issue the developer RFQ document for eight-eighty-nine, nine-oh-three and nine-thirteen Farmington Avenue. Uh, this has been brought before you before. Uh, there's been a group that put together an RFQ for the, seeking a proposal from developers for the development of, of the area along Farmington Avenue. Uh, Chris Edge is here to, uh, answer any questions or go further into, into details on the RFQ.
Okay. Sure, uh, just wanted to pass something along. Um, since the last meeting, we had made some slight modifications, uh, to the RFQ, particularly with the items discussed on the Boulevard. Uh, I'll wait till those come around and, uh, I'll quickly go through what those changes were. So the, the changes on the RFQ are on page four, five, and nine. Um, I'll let you each take a look at that briefly. Essentially what it is, is basically saying that the Boulevard can be part of the process if the developer chooses, instead of saying it must be there. So take a look at the language. I'll have any, answering questions you have, but just wanted to pass that along to you, cause those were concerns expressed at a previous meeting.
I like the red lines. Thank you. Much appreciated.
Yes, yes.
Did the town attorney review the changes and everything's good so far, or?
Um, I don't believe the county attorney took a look at the changes. They were pretty much just modifications on what was existing there. Like, we can definitely run it by them to make sure, but it's largely language changes, but I'll make sure I do run it by court council.
Chris, did you hear about something different tonight?
Sorry, let me get a copy of this. I believe it's the same one, but it actually shows changes in red lines.
Um, we're already, uh, we're already working on the, I know one of the changes here is with the groundwater contamination?
Yeah.
But we're already working on that.
On some of the sites.
Some of it.
Some of the sites, we're not all the sites, but, uh, yeah, some of the sites we are. In fact, some of them mature as far as the, going into the investigation.
Yes. Yeah, we've been very, working very closely with DEP as well as, um, insurance company that's covering.
Think so. The groundwater? You good with the groundwater remediation?
I don't know who in their right mind would accept the responsibility. If they do, God bless them.
That, that did cross my mind. No one's gonna want to accept that, most likely, but, uh, that's just what we have, right?
Yeah.
Yes, that, that is our intent at this point, to put out the RFQ in that manner. With this RFQ as well, is we do not have to choose anyone and decide to go forward. This gives us an opportunity to look at proposals from the private sector with the work of the train station, as well as the, um, the amount of trains coming in. It gives us an opportunity to see what could be done.
Yeah, I mean, so, people in the audience understand if any, anyone has questions on this. I think the, Sam LaMagna spoke, I guess he's not here, but, um, the reason why, you know, part of this property, as you, some of you know, was, um, we were, we were thinking of putting a police station there. I, I don't, we've never said we wouldn't put a police station there. The only reason why I voted, uh, to not do that at this point, when, when the council voted and the majority voted to not fund it, uh, last year, was just purely on budgetary reasons. Um, and, uh, I had a great debate with myself, being thirty years in law enforcement. It was hard not to give the police everything they wanted, cause that's what I would've wanted if I wasn't, when I was in law enforcement. Um, but we have another, you know, duty to the town and, um, I'm actually, I, I debated that decision even after we made it, but this, because of the budget situation with the state and what we're facing, I, I, I think it was the right decision not to, uh, fund another sixteen million dollars right at this point in time. Uh, I think it would've put us in a bad spot. So, it's not to say we won't put the police station there. I don't think we've ever, that was not the reason for that vote. I, that has been explained to the, to the police commission and to the police chief. Um, you know, while we have the time to look at this whole, uh, transportation-oriented development, uh, before we decide what to do with that spot for the police, or other options possibly, which we're exploring as well, with Mr. Healy and the, uh, police department, um, we're not really sure what those options are. We're just trying to look at everything and while we have the time, this is a very important, obviously, part of our town, uh, with the new train service coming through. I think it's important that we, uh, you know, try and do the best we can for the town economically, uh, and for many reasons. So, this is just gonna give us some thoughts. We had a whole study done. I think the final study's coming out soon, right, the final study with Civic Moxie, who studied this area, made some recommendations on what the development would be. Um, you know, I'm not su- we really haven't, you know, the council certainly, I, I don't think anybody in town economic development, planning and zoning, no one has any preconceived notions on what to do. They were trying to find what the best thing is to do for all of us. Um, and this will give us some, maybe, direction, maybe thoughts on what developers may do there. Uh, years ago, a few years ago, when I was on planning and zoning, we, we approved this transportation-oriented development around the train station. You know, we just, it was difficult to, to see what, what would go there, you know. We, we have to see. It'd be great if one developer would come in and do the whole thing for us, with a reasonable project for us, mixed use, whatever, whatever they come up with, if everyone thinks that's the right way to go. Obviously, we'll have more public hearings on it, um, when proposals come in, so people can, can speak to what they think we should do there. Um, so it's really just, while we're kind of sitting and waiting and deciding what, what to do there, let's see what the private sector says. What, what do they think will go there? We've had a lot of different thoughts on what, what to put in there. Obviously, we, we're hoping for our, uh, our old train station would've been, uh, the centerpiece of that. Unfortunately, that got burned down, but, um, we will, you know, move forward from there. So, you know, that's what this is about. We're gonna put it out, see who comes in, see what they, uh, show us, and it doesn't bind us to, to take anything, to not take it. Uh, we'll, we'll do what's, what's best and for the community and we'll certainly have more hearings on it before we make any decisions.
Absolutely. And, um, Mr. Mayor, in the last about two weeks, I've spoken to three different developers who've expressed interest in it. Um, the reason why it's coming to you today with no meeting in August was to be able to get it out there, um, get feedback from folks, and again, it's going to be a long process. And we're not gonna be deciding quickly. We're gonna look at what comes in, see what's best for residents, council, everyone involved.
Yeah, and, and obviously, and it would still go through, you know, if this comes in, if there is some proposal, obviously goes through planning and zoning, it goes through inland wetlands, it's gonna go through economic development before it ever comes to the council for, for any type of approval. And again, we will have, there will be multiple bites at the apple for public input as we go through this process, development and to the police station. I mean, we're not done discussing that, uh, either, so it's just kind of a, a little bit of a, uh, a short reprieve while we, uh, kind of get through this and financially, hopefully, we, uh, pay down some of our debt. Most of our debt is from the high school. We needed the high school. It's a beautiful new school. We needed it desperately. It's, it's a great place, but we have to pay for it, and we're paying for it. And last, last year, this year, next year, it's our highest debt payments. After that, they will start going down, which will give the town a little bit of a breather. All of this assumes that we, uh, have some reasonable, uh, funding that comes from the state. Right now, we have no idea, as you know, what's coming from the state, so it's a little scary, but, uh, we, we've done a reasonable budget to go forward and we just have to wait and see what the state decides to give us, but, um, so it's, it's a good time to be responsible and a little prudent on, on, before we go spend sixteen to twenty million dollars, I think. So that, that's, that's where we're at, so. Counselors, anything else?
Chris, I just have a minor.
Sure.
Picked up that seemed a little redundant to me on page five, under submission requirements. Uh, right in the middle of that paragraph, it says, "The town seeks a conceptual development concept." Kind of seemed-
Yes.
Maybe, I'm not understanding that.
Nope.
I was thinking maybe a conceptual development plan might work better than-
Yes, that, um, yes. Thank you.
Just minor.
Important, though.
Anything, Charlie? No? You guys comfortable with where it reads, changes? Okay, good. Thank you, Chris. So, take a motion on this.
Okay, move to authorize the issuance of the attached developer RFQ document for eight-eighty-nine, nine-oh-three and nine-thirteen Farmington Avenue.
Okay, we have a second on that?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers.
Let's go forth and develop.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, agenda item number four is to approve the change of the name of Percival Baseball Field to the Paul K. Beretta Field and to name the entire park at Highland Avenue as Percival Park.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion on this?
Move to approve the changing of the name of Percival Baseball Field to Paul K. Beretta Field and to name the entire park at Highland Avenue as Percival Park.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, just as one who had the pleasure of playing, uh, against Paulie in Little League and then, uh, with him at the Percival Field, I think it's only fitting that we rename that plot, uh, in his honor. He, uh, he was one hell of a baseball player, but also one hell of a guy and coach. And, um, I know he would be honored and we pay respect to Paulie, but also to the Percival family by naming the park, uh, after the Percival.
And I just want to say, as one who played for Paul Beretta sparingly, I wasn't a great baseball player, but there's two things I remember about Paul Beretta. As one, every time I hear Sinatra's New York, New York, New York, I think of him, because he played that all the time. Excuse me. And the other thing is, he didn't like hats on backwards.
I agree.
Smiled that wrong.
Um, yeah, no, I mean, his name's been around, we all, that, that have grown up in Berlin, and, uh, this timeframe, uh, know Paul and know his, of his exploits and, uh, his career and, uh, yeah, I think it's, uh, it's a great thing to honor him and his family and, and continue to honor, you know, uh, Percival as well, so. All right, any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, great.
Agenda item number five is, is requesting permission to consume alcohol beverages at Pistol Creek for the Berlin Fire Department family picnic. They're anticipating about seventy-five people of all ages on Saturday, August twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen. Uh, I think as we've gone over before, uh, anytime that a town park is used in serving alcohol, they require to come before the town council for approval.
Okay, yeah, this was something that I guess is in our charter, right? Is in the charter or in the ordinance?
Ordinances.
It's in our, it's in ordinance and I guess many, I guess in the past, we weren't necessarily, following our own ordinance, so we have corrected that. So we've seen a few of these come before us, uh, in the last couple of meetings. So, motion on this?
Before I do that, I maybe, like, ask Jennifer, should we insert the language after beer and wine for those twenty-one and over into there? Cause it kind of reads funny, like I'm saying, anybody comes to the party should have beer and wine?
I, I think that's a very good idea.
Okay.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay. Move to approve, uh, permission for consumption of alcohol beverages, beer and wine, for those twenty-one and over at Pistol Creek for the Berlin Fire Department family picnic for approximately seventy-five people of all ages on Saturday, August twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen. A buffet meal will be served and tulip insurance was obtained.
Okay, thank you. Uh, second on that?
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? We inserted that language, which was good. I, I didn't think Mr. Simons would allow the three-year-old to have a beer, but, you know, we just want to make sure that, that does, we know that won't happen, though. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so moved. Enjoy your picnic.
Agenda item number six is by the T. Cop Foundation for Basketball and Tennis Tournament. Uh, it's a request for waiver of the field rental fees and permission to sell. Um, the Berlin Park and Rec Commission has a, has recommended waiving the field rental fees of the amount of three-hundred-and-fifty dollars for the T. Cop Foundation. They're going to hold a three-on-three basketball tournament and tennis doubles tournament. Uh, you know, we're, we're working to get the, the, the courts all finished off so that it'll look good for them. Uh, they did last year donate, the T. Cop Foundation donated, uh, I believe about ten thousand dollars toward the renovation for some of the, uh, some of the renovations of the, of the courts. There's a forty-dollar fee charged for each team that helps raise, uh, funds for future donations.
Great. Motion?
Okay, move to approve waiving estimated field rental fees in the amount of three-hundred-and-fifty dollars and to grant permission for the Tyler Cop Foundation to sell food, beverages, and merchandise at the Tyler Cop Foundation, three versus three basketball tournament and tennis, tennis doubles tournament. Must mess that up.
Uh, second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so moved. Thank you.
Agenda item number seven, uh, the Timberland Golf Course, uh, requesting to accept a donation of a golf cart. The Timberlands Men Club have, uh, two years ago purchased a device called the Gooseinator. It's for, uh, you know, remove scaring or keeping geese off of the golf course. As part of that, they need to have a cart, uh, used for that, uh, purpose. Uh, the men's club has donated a cart to the golf course for the sole purpose of being used to house the Gooseinator, so the, the golf cart would be exclusively used for the Gooseinator. And I recommend that they, that they turn it over to the town, let us maintain it, uh, and have the Gooseinator on that particular cart. John Zuck is here to answer any questions.
The Gooseinator? We've heard a lot about the Gooseinator.
I have a picture of the cart with the Gooseinator on it.
Oh, let's see. I'd like to see the guy. I've never seen the Gooseinator.
It's on the back of the-
Yeah.
Cart.
And that, that, that really works, huh? Like a charm, from what I hear.
Anything that I've ever seen.
Really, huh? That's amazing. That's great. Great. Okay. Motion on this?
Move to approve a donation of a golf cart from the Timberland Men's Club to be used exclusively by the Men's Club at Timberland for the purpose of transporting the Gooseinator. Further recommend that the town and Timberland provide storage and fuel for the cart. Estimated yearly fuel consumption is about twelve gallons. Value of the cart donation is three thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Second on that?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so moved.
Agenda item number eight, uh, is again for Timberland. It's requesting a fee waiver for the Junior Inter Club Golf Tournament. Uh, Timberland's junior golfers, along with golf, junior golfers from Shuttle Metal, Rockledge, Ellington Ridge, Manchester Country Club, Hartford, uh, Golf Club, the Golf Club of Avon, and Weathers, Weathersfield Country Club participate in the Junior Inter Club Tournament. Um, there's approximately thirty-two players participating. Uh, the request is for a four-hundred-dollar fee waiver for the juniors participating in the event. Um, the Park and Rec Department has approved this and the other seven courses that normally participate, uh, participate in this have waived the fees for those, for the players.
All right, uh, motion?
Move to approve a fee waiver in the amount of four hundred dollars for the Timberland Junior Inter Club Tournament to be held at Timberland Golf Club on August sixteenth, two thousand seventeen.
Second? All right, uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Agenda item number nine is the request to enter into a five-year multi-function copier-printer-scanner lease, uh, agreement with Office Works. Um, our current contract is coming to an end. Kevin Delaney worked on an RFQ, looking for, uh, obviously, we're looking for a way of reducing our costs on copying costs and paper and, and consolidating our copiers with the Board of Ed. Um, they put together this package. Um, you have the original, uh, request there with, with, with a, with a motion. Uh, there was a subsequent, um, email sent out, which Kevin can explain, which will request you to amend your motion once you make it.
Sure, we can make the motion then.
Okay. I'm gonna read the original motion first, right? Motion, motion to authorize the interim town manager to sign a five-year multi-function copier-printer-scanner lease agreement to the low bidder, Office Works, and leave capital funding for the lease of fifteen copiers at various town locations.
Now, we're amended. Uh, do we, do we need to do that first?
You have to read the first, original motion first.
Right.
And then you can discuss it, whatever. Kevin can, um, explain what the change is and then you're going to-
Make a motion.
Make an amended motion. At that point, you vote on the amended motion, then you go back to the original motion as amended. So there's gonna be two votes on this.
Got it. Okay. All right, so-
I'm trying to get you guys in order here.
Huh? What's that?
I'm trying to get you guys in order.
We'll get there. Yes.
Uh, so, um, the town's multi-function devices, the lease, the three-year lease was coming up and, working together with Eva, with the Board of Ed, rather than going out seeking bids on fifteen devices, we combined the two, made it a fifty-five, um, item bid in the anticipation of getting more bidders and we ended up accomplishing that. Uh, nine companies bid and ultimately, based on the low bidder, it will save between the Board of Ed and the town side thirty-five thousand dollars a year compared to what we, we have been spending. Um, comparatively speaking, we were spending about a hundred-seventy thousand dollars a year for, for the leases from the two. So thirty-five thousand against one-seventy is a, is a pretty decent savings for the effort. Um, the amendment is only the name of the leasing company. Office Works, um, has been the supplier for the last three years of the town's machines. We had been working with Leaf Capital, did a great job, uh, but Office Works also works with other lending organizations to try to secure the best terms for clients and prospects and Delage Landon came in with better terms on behalf of the town, so that's why we're going with them.
Great. Okay, so, uh, the motion on this?
Motion to amend the original motion and authorize the interim town manager to sign a five-year multi-function copier-printer-scanner lease agreement to the low bidder, Office Works and Delage Landon Financial Services for the lease of fifteen copiers at various town locations.
Okay, thanks.
Second.
Second. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so moved. And if we could vote on the, uh, take a vote on the original motion, uh, which is on the floor, so as amended, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. Thanks. Thank you. Thanks, Kevin.
Okay, agenda item number ten is the funding for the elevator. Um, I think we, you know, we've been before you before, talking about the elevator. Uh, the, there's a, um, the elevator has been designed and bid out for the library and for the community center. Originally, there, there was an estimated- Originally, there, there was an estimate of about two hundred and fifty, one thousand dollars cost. A grant of about one thou, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars was obtained. The library raised the remaining funds. They went out to bid. The bids came in higher than, than originally anticipated. Two bids, they, two bids were evaluated. One was from Acor Builders, the other one from J, J.A. Rosa. When those were reviewed by the team doing this, there was a concern about the low bidder, Acor Builders, as they have never built a, a library, excuse me, an elevator until, entirely.
At all?
At all. And so there was a concern about that.
That's okay, Helen, right?
So the, the team has got together and they're recommending to you, which is, which is allowed under our, our rules, to go with the second, the second bidder, J.A. Rosa. J.A. Rosa has, has four, four elevators currently under construction. They are also the ones that handle the brand of elevator that we, that we are installing. The bid was for two hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars, which is more than the money they had set aside. We had a meeting where we, we, we had Helen come up to see us. We squeezed her a little and we looked for extra, extra money. And what Helen, we, we just, what has come to fruition is that she said it was more important to have the elevator, so she's, she's requesting to move twenty-five thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars, which had previously been allocated for the RFID system at the library, to the, to the elevator project. The remaining contingency will be available from Public Buildings Contractual Service. We squeezed dog too. And so we came up with the funding for the, for the elevator. We're recommending to you that you approve this and the tran, allow us to use the funds from the RFID.
Okay. Motion on this?
Move to authorize the interim town manager to award bid number two thousand seventeen dash thirty-six to J.A. Rosa Construction of Wolkett, Connecticut, in the amount of two hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars, and to authorize the interim town manager to increase the contract up to three hundred and four thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars if needed.
Second on this?
Second.
Discussion, I'm, you know, I guess Helen, you're happy we're finally here, huh? And you, I know you worked very hard to get those matching funds, and we really appreciate that.
Well, I wasn't alone.
I know that.
The library board gave me fifty thousand dollars, the friends gave me over three thousand dollars, and I contributed ten thousand dollars of our state money that we get every year as a reimbursement. So, we really covered half of the match. Giving up RFID was a tough pill to swallow because I already had to give up part of that to comply with this year's budget request.
Remember that, yeah.
And now, this is, this is a dead deal. I think the money that we saving on the printers and copiers would suffice to cover the, instead of contingency.
Well, maybe we could talk about that. I don't see why not.
I would like to talk about that.
We can talk about that, sure.
But I, I am very much in favor of the second lowest bidder because safety is indeed an issue. The other, the other problem that we have is that if we don't use the money given to us within eighteen months, and this was given to us back in November, we're down to ten months now. So if we go with the lowest bidder and they have to subcontract everything out, we will not make the construction deadline and have to forfeit the money. So, I don't want to see that happen either.
No, nor do we. Okay. Yeah, no, I know, I know you guys worked hard and, you know, it's good to see we, if we vote on this, we have a company that does build elevators, that's probably fairly important to all of us, so.
Yes.
Understand that, we understand that part.
And then we can talk about paying for it later.
Well, I, you know, we've, this is something that we all know we need and, you know, every year in the budget, hearings when you come and tell us all the great things that are happening at the library, that's good to hear, you know, we understand. It's thriving and that's wonderful, so this will help, you know, people to get there, which is great, so. Any other comments?
I just want to say I agree with the choice to, to make sure that you have someone that's, makes you comfortable. I don't think it's a project you want to have somebody on there to learn as they go.
No, thanks.
And I want to thank everybody that helped you and your efforts, and even some of the private citizens. I mean, we've approved a lot of our consent agendas, and you look at the money some people gave in this town and you're amazed. Very impressive.
It's important to a lot of people. They put their money where their mouth is.
Yeah. That's great, a real community effort. That's good. Yes, sir?
I, I support it, but question to council, are we opening ourselves up for any kind of legal action by not taking the lowest bidder?
No.
No. You have, you have a, you have a statement in, in your bids that you take the lo, the lowest bid, it's good for the town, appropriate for the town.
We just have to justify why it was that we went with one or the other.
Still, we're all right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Okay, with that, we have a motion on the floor, we have a second, we've had our discussion. Hearing, no for discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Great. Congratulations, let's go build an elevator.
Okay. Agenda item number eleven. This is, this is calling for approval of a ceiling replacement, door installation-related work. There have been three projects identified throughout the town, one at the Griswold Elementary School, one of the, a new door being installed in the storage room at the Berlin High School. And then also, when you come back to your next meeting, you'll have new ceilings and paint in, in the council chambers, so we're, we're going to...
Looks like Peter's, that might fall on you, Peter, good thing you're going to fix it.
Probably, yeah.
I know, I was going to say.
Back there too, doesn't look too good, yeah.
So we're going to start doing some work up here to, to, you know, change the ceilings, do some painting, a little AV work, so when you come back, the change, the council chambers look a little different. So we're requesting approval for that work.
Okay. Any motion on this?
Move to authorize the interim town manager to award a contract, two thousand eighteen oh-one, for ceiling replacement, door installation, and related work to the low bidder Blake Contracting LLC of Hartford, Connecticut, in the amount not to exceed forty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars, including a ten percent contingency for the projects.
Second on this?
Second.
Just a question. A new door in a storage room at Berlin High School. I mean, we, we just had a beautiful high school built. What, what happened with this? Just out of curiosity for all the millions we spent. Understanding things change, I get it, but just...
It was more of a, a maintenance item for regress. We had a, an old fan room that we can utilize for storing air filters in and equipment for the rooftop systems, and it's a lot easier, safer way to, to get materials in and out of the storage room with this door. We thought about bringing it back to the, the commission and the committee for utilizing bonded funds, but we thought that we could use it with some proceeds from gov deals and capital accounts, and which projects, projects came in under budget, so we're going to utilize that funding instead of pay on it for thirty years.
Okay, yeah, that's better.
It is important, one thing that, and I keep reiterating to everyone, when we finish that project, plus additional projects we're doing, the town has, what's it, a thousand more filters than we had a couple of years ago. So, it's, it's a, it's a much larger task, and, and if we can put the filters closer to where we're, we're using them, it, it saves us time and effort to, to change the filters, but it makes their jobs easier, and we want to make sure they change the filters. I mean, that's, that's one of the reasons we did these projects for indoor air quality, and Doug's men are trying to make sure that we, we have these done on time, so it's, it's an important, it's, it's an important project to get us to finish up.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close, so moved. Thanks, Doug.
Agenda item number twelve is to purchase auto parts and supplies from NAPA, utilizing State Contract Department of Administrative Services contract, sixteen PSX zero-zero-three-zero for the next fiscal year. The Fleet Garage, they, they, they buy various parts in, in, you know, filters, belts, different components for each car. What they do is they normally, they try to get a couple of prices before they purchase any one part, and they need the flexibility to go to different types of, different vendors. Jim Simons here to discuss that. Jim and I have talked about it. He calls and gets prices and compares them, so if he has the flexibility to go to Advance, NAPA, Fleet, he can, he can compare prices then purchase them from the vendor, which is the least expensive for the town. So we're requesting multiple vendors.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. And the only thing, I, I guess it's not in the motions, but I noticed that, that line before where obviously the individual amounts exceed our budgeted figure, we will not collectively expend our budgeted amount, so. Can we have that and maybe make that, I don't know, we can make that another motion, or, I mean, I know it's, it's mentioned, but, but, I mean, I guess that's the understanding, right? Jim, you can, if you want to weigh in. I mean, I know, so, because some of these contracts are, right, if we spent the full amount, that'd be over, right, our total budgeted amount?
Certainly will.
Okay.
Yes, certainly will. The, to be able to anticipate, guess, what we're going to spend at any one vendor over, over the year, would be real good if we could do that. So we have guestimates, and the guestimates are all well over the ten thousand dollar range.
Right.
So when we, let's just say we're looking for an exhaust for something. The mechanic will go to the, to the computers. In the computers, we have both NAPA warehouse, both C, Advance Auto Warehouse, and Ford. And we would look and see where with, where the parts are, what the cost would be, and we would purchase what's best for it. So I can't tell you currently that Ford's going to be the best price, or Advance, or NAPA's going to be the best, best price. So that gives us the ability to do that. We have no intentions of going over what the budgeted amount is. It's just that during the course of the year, we may spend a certain amount with NAPA and less with Advance, or vice versa, and we can't just tell you that.
Yeah, no, that, that's fine. I, I just want to somehow incorporate that, and, and maybe we can make an, an additional motion, just to incorporate that in, you know, just with that understanding. Yes.
So, this amount is a line item in the budget, correct?
Correct. Yes.
So if you exceeded that ten thousand dollars, or whatever that line amount was, you would have to come to us for a transfer anyway. So, council would be aware if it was exceeded.
Correct.
You want these separately, Kim? You want to vote on them separately? Or just read them all and vote on them all at the same time?
I would say go with it.
Okay.
Except, uh, all together or separate?
All together.
All together.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
That's fine. Move to approve the purchase of auto parts and supplies using the above State Contract, Connecticut Department of Administrative Services contract, one-six PSX zero-zero-three-zero from NAPA Auto Parts, for amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars, and move to approve purchase of auto parts and supplies using above US Communities contract from Advanced Auto Parts, not to exceed thirty thousand dollars, and to move to approve the purchase of auto parts and supplies using the above State Connecticut Department of Administrative Services contract, sixteen PSX zero-zero-three-zero for Fleet Pride, for an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. Move to approve the purchase of auto parts and supplies using the State of Connecticut DAS Services contract, sixteen PSX zero-zero-three-zero from Taska Ford, for an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. And move to approve the purchase of auto parts and supplies from Monaco Ford, for an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. And finally, finally move to approve purchase of auto parts and supplies from Rock Auto for an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, you know what? Could we just do, make that a bit more comfortable, having that as the last motion?
Okay, and also move to include the language, even these individual amounts exceed our budgeted figure, we will not collectively overexpend our budgeted amount for auto parts.
Okay, great. Thank you. Have a second on that? All those?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I, I do have a question on that motion about not exceeding. We can still come if he exceeds and we can transfer money, right? By, by making that motion, are we not allowing Jim to do what he needs to do? I, I just want to make sure that that motion is not going to hinder Jim in any way in terms of parts.
I think we could always...
I think at any... Yeah, I, I think if, if he anticipates that he's going to exceed, he could come to you.
Okay.
And request that you approve that exceedance.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
I don't think it prohibits him from doing that.
Okay.
I think it's more belts and suspenders.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, so moved. Thank you. Thanks, Jim.
Okay.
Stay there, Jim. Yeah, that's right, that's where you get the, you got diesel now, yeah, you got some other stuff too, yeah. Oh, tires too.
Yeah, Jim and I have talked about this. It's time to do, to look at the next year's diesel contract. If the contract expired in June thirtieth, what we feel is we'd like to span the summer, wait till after Labor Day. Typically, the harbor price of, of diesel comes down at that point. We talked about it, we felt that there's a greater savings if we didn't bid it now, wait till after Labor Day, and just, we could go with the harbor price during the summer, and then once we get past Labor Day, go off for bid. We feel we, we have a better opportunity to get savings, and the amount, the quantity we buy from September on would more than cover the sa, the cost of buying it now. So, that was our recommendation.
Okay, motion on this?
Okay, move to waive the town's purchasing requirements and purchase diesel fuel from East River Energy for an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars while we prepare bid documents.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes.
What, what's the timeframe from end of summer to when it starts rising?
Usually you're going to be somewhere in September, early October before the cold weather hits.
Okay.
Right now, you're at the point now where the terminals are being serviced.
Yep.
Plus you're at the higher peak time for travel, so your prices are going up in the last two to three weeks, it's probably going up a nickel, which is considerable when we're purchasing a lot of fuel. Right after Labor Day, they should come down a little bit and then hover.
So you're comfortable, like, the first meeting in September, you'll have a good feel, and we can vote on that before they start going back up? Okay.
Is this something that would change like every year?
This is, contracts are year to year, yes.
Okay, so when we do it in September this year, then the following year we'll do it again in September and again in September, so this expenditure is like a one-time?
We, we can reschedule our times to do it, or we can limit the amount of, if, over the summer, let's just say we use ten thousand gallons, and we usually use thirty-seven over the year, we can go, drop it back and only do a contract for twenty-seven, and get it back on the right schedule, or, in that scheduled period that we needed before. Or we can relook at that and then just do September to September.
Okay. Cool. Yeah, that's what I was wanting to figure out, just like, put all the pieces together and see how it's cheaper, if we can save some money.
So, sometimes it is cheaper to go in the spring. This year, the prices were, even though the prices are lower, the gas pumps are, they weren't really lower when you went out to the market. So right now, you're, you're, you're about nineteen cents to twenty-two cents above where we currently are in contract. And that's a considerable amount of money.
Yeah, that's a lot. Cool, thank you.
Okay. Motion on the floor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, so moved. Thank you.
Still Jim Simons, don't go away. Requesting to waive the purchasing requirement for Connecticut Tire invoice BE two-five SX for two thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars and ninety cents. You typically buy Goodyear tires, but the last year they also look at, which is better for the town, look at alternate brands also, and the alternate, he went, they've gone And the alternate, they've gone over the $10,000 threshold for that, for the alternate brands, and requesting $2,898.90 for that overage.
Okay, motion on this?
Okay. Move to waive the town's purchasing requirements in order to pay the $2,898.90 invoice to Connecticut Tire for fiscal year 1617.
Second on that?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so moved.
I think your last one, Jim. A request, the town, agenda number 15, is to request the approval for purchasing Goodyear tires and off-brand tires from Connecticut Tire, Tosi Tire, utilizing the state Connecticut Department of Administrative Contract, similar to the other contracts about the multiple vendors. It's good to be able to go to multiple vendors, and these are some of the larger ones in the State of Connecticut, Tosi Tire, Connecticut Tire, and so, it's ability to go back and forth, to be able to see whether or not they have Goodyear, off-brand tires, to see what's the best price for the town. And in the explanation, it talks about, sometimes, we don't need the Goodyear tires for some of the other cars, which are not used at higher speeds. So, Jim's here to answer any questions.
Okay. Motion?
Move to approve the purchase of Goodyear tires utilizing the State of Connecticut DAS Service Contract 12 PSX 0109 for a total of $16,000 from Connecticut Tire and Tosi Tire, and also, move to approve the purchase of off-brand tires utilizing the State of Connecticut DAS Services Contract 12 PSX 0109 for a total of $12,000 from Connecticut Tire and Tosi Tire.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so moved. Thank you. Thanks, Jim.
Agenda item number 16 is authorization to file the application for 2017 Community Connectivity Program Grant. We have an opportunity to apply for another grant. As you know, we're in the middle of a sidewalk project currently. We're constantly looking to how to improve our connectivity throughout the town, taking areas which don't have sidewalks, and connecting to other areas which do have sidewalks. It improves, you know, the ability of people to walk from one part of town to the other. Also, if you talk with the school district, it helps them with their bus routes, are able to have children walk to certain areas to catch the bus. This is an opportunity to get another grant, and we've identified, what we're going to do is continue the program which we're currently on. We had identified other areas in town which we didn't have monies to fund, and we would continue that program and fund those areas.
Excellent.
Okay, great. Motion?
Okay, move to authorize the interim town manager to apply for a 2017 Community Connectivity Program Grant, and to sign the endorsement and recommendation of the project by the municipality.
Second on this? All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so moved.
Agenda item, agenda item number 17 is authorization to file the application and agreements for the Bromfields Grant to conduct environmental assessments of 73 Woodlawn Road and 50, excuse me, 586 Demming Road. Chris Edge is here to answer any questions.
Okay, okay.
Oh, yeah, we switched?
Yeah, I thought I left the copies there.
That's okay, you probably did.
Yeah, it's a different one. It's just a different one. Here, you can, oh, here's another one. You'll switch your room.
Okay, you want a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Move to pass the attached resolution to authorize interim town manager to file a grant application and enter into a necessary agreements related to the environmental assessments at 586 Demming Road and 73 Woodlawn Road.
Okay, second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes.
So, the owners of the property currently, since we are kind of working together with them to get this done, what are their, have they expressed kind of plans for that property to, once it's cleaned up, you know, make sure that it's benefiting them and the town, and that sort of thing?
Yes, actually, there's the two different properties. One is 586 Demming, which is formerly the Micron Manufacturing Building. We're working with them right now. They are looking to sell the property. But right now, working with their environmental consultant to find out what it is, they've been matching 30% of the monies, which I think for them has worked out to about $22,000,[771.94][771.94]$23,000. The other property, 73 Woodlawn, which is the former DeBurring Labs, they're looking to reuse the building. It's actually owned by Taska, working with them as well. They've also matched about $23,000. So, it's been a combination of state monies and monies from the property owners. We're working with both of them, and moving along a path, hopefully, for both to be reused.
Thank you.
Okay. Hearing, no further discussion. Motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so moved. Thank you.
Agenda item number 18 is to award, award a contract to Fozzy Associates for an ICD nine, nine dash 10 coating company for 2017, 2018. The coating company works for the nurses, and it provides the coating for the patients that goes for their reimbursement. A couple of years ago, they went out for a bid for other people to do it. The one, one year, they didn't get any bids, the next year, they got a bid for $110. Fozzy does it for $54 per patient record, but because our agency's so small, they wouldn't bid on it. They will extend the price to us. We felt that since, in the past, they hadn't got a bid, or the one bid they got was almost, was more than double, and that Fozzy was going to hold the price for us again. We're recommending to you that, and they do a very good job for us, and it's key for the nurses to keep the cash flow, that we're recommending to you to award the contract to them again for another year.
Okay, thank you. Motion on this?
Move to waive the bidding procedures and authorize the interim town manager to continue with the existing contract with Fozzy Associates for a cost of $54 per record, and a total cost not to exceed $17,658 for this year, since this is in the best interest of the town. An RFP will be done for next 2018, 2019 fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. Second?
Second.
Discussion on this?
I just want to say, coating is so extremely important to getting reimbursement, and I know in the past, we've had an issue when folks were out due to various reasons. We got behind on it, and it was a real problem for the nursing department. So, I think, even though this is a no bid, I think it's extremely important that we move forward with it. It just really is crucial to, for the department to get their reimbursement.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so moved. Thank you.
Okay. Number 19, the Bristol Resource Recovery Facility Operating Committee, household hazardous waste collection, they changed vendors, and they're changing, there's a fee also now incurred by the town as part of the administration of that, of $3,622. We're requesting the council's approval to authorize interim town manager to sign, on behalf of the town, to allow the continuation of Burling's use of the program. That's a good program. It allows people, on a periodic basis, to take any, household hazardous waste that they have, dispose of it at no cost to the resident. What happens is, is when you go there, they keep a record of who comes from what town, then the town, it gets billed back. We've paid for that over time out of our waste disposal fees, our budget at that location. And it works very well, being one who coordinated that for several years for Towns North West Corner, it's a good program, and it's a good way of having people, so it doesn't end up in the waste stream. It gives them an access to do that, so I recommend that you approve this.
Okay, thank you. Motion?
Move to authorize the interim town manager to execute an agreement for the collection, management, transportation, and proper disposal of hazardous household materials, on behalf of the BRRFOC.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to add that it's a good program, I'm going to support it, but I'd like to remind our residents that they can dispose of paint for free at a number of locations, and that saves a ton of money, instead of taking it there.
Okay, good to know. All right. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so moved. Okay. Okay. Come through our appointments, I see we have one, Kate?
Yes.
Good, amen.
One appointment.
And that was based upon, right, a, oh, yeah, Brad, Brad resigned. And he's on another commission, right? That's no...
He's on in the red light right now.
That's no problem, right? Does he have to resign from that one, or can he stay on both? Should we?
I'm not sure, to be honest with you.
Really?
I don't think it's an issue, because I know there's...
I think that they can be on it. I mean, as long as she wants to continue on it, I don't think there's anything as far as...
I think it's happened before.
Yeah, I don't think it's an issue either, I'm just asking, just to make sure.
It's more if he was elected, that would be more of a problem.
Right, yeah, okay.
I've served on, I've served on multiple commissions all the time.
Same time, yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Suffer from that, can't stand him simply too.
So, that, he's the only one, and I see there's just a replacement term for, I guess, about six months, right, till January, so, all right, yeah, so, take a nomination.
Okay, eliminate Brian Rogan for the replacement for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so moved. All right. Hope he knows what he's getting into, okay. Okay, town managers' report.
Okay, I think you've got a lot of stuff given to you, thanks, I'm going to keep it short.
Thank you.
I would, the first one I'd like to do, though, I'd like to thank Chris Edge. Chris Edge is here, I'd like to just point out, Chris has been going through the CROG meetings, and we've talked to you about, you know, the dam project, and also the bridge project, Kensington Road. Chris worked hard to give us a grant, and so, the work that we're going to do on the Kensington Road Bridge, the five pipes that are near the post office, Chris has obtained a grant for us through the CROG program, so that that project will be funded, totally funded through the program. So, we have the money for that program. We can start doing the engineering work and things, and put that into place in the next couple of years, where that project will be totally funded. And then, Chris and I have talked, and we're going to go back to them and see if we can get the funding for the dam also. And I did talk to the State of Connecticut, and gave them a proposed schedule for the dam, and I think I've gotten the sense from residents and the council that the dam should be renovated, not torn down, looking at the historic value of the dam and everything. So, we're looking, I've talked to the State of Connecticut DEEP, they would like that to be, also become like an educational process, because of fish ladder that would be required to be installed at the dam. It would, if, when we put the fish ladder there, it would be the headwaters for the yellow wipes, that's as far as they have to go, and so, what the DEEP would work with us as far as seeding the pond to help draw the fish up to the pond, so. So, Chris has done the first part, got the grant for the bridge, so.
Thanks.
I would also like to say, there will be a press release shortly. Kerma has, is going to come in the next day or so, and present the town with a check for $74,784. It is the, our prorated share of Kerma's members equity distribution for last year, so they did well, and so therefore, the town of Burling receives $74,000 back. The sidewalk, we've talked about. One thing I did, I heard come up was the ADA compliance. I just wanted to, Barbara had sent in reports to us, and we have gotten those. We have created a group of us in staff who are looking at ADA compliance. Doug is currently working on a proposal to have somebody come in and do an ADA assessment for us. We've looked at it, some of the issues that they've risen, we can handle internally, like, it's just a matter of adjusting doors and things like that to make them ADA compliant. Some of the other issues that Barbara's brought to our attention, we are looking at to see how we can, in the future, fund those, and make our facilities more ADA compliant. So, and that's about all I have. Yes?
I would like to, actually, Jack and I talked earlier today, but I see Kevin's here, so I wanted to mention it as well. I am just going to go on record and ask that Jack and Kevin work together, maybe during August, when you're not being bothered by us, to really start to look at what's going to happen with the Board of Finance, in terms of, kind of, some of the details that aren't spelled out in the charter. So, how many times a month are they meeting? Are they meeting once a month, are they meeting twice a month? How does a chair get elected? You know, what is going to actually be the content of those meetings versus the content of the council meetings? I just know November's going to get here before we know it, and I think it's important that, from a staff perspective, Kevin, I'm assuming you're going to be the staff liaison for that, you know, it would make sense. But I just don't want anybody to be surprised, and for that Board of Finance to sit and have nothing to do for two months. So, I would just ask that, you know, you kind of take that on, maybe bring that back to the council to let us know what's going on with it. I just don't want it to get kind of forgotten about, because it's going to be an important board going forward.
Yeah, that's great. I don't think we'll forget about the Board of Finance, but, yeah, no, we should certainly have some basic ground rules, hopefully, because it is new to us, again, and much, I'm sure, much different than many years ago. So, yeah, I mean, that certainly makes sense, while you have, in all your spare time, Jack and Kevin.
Well, we won't be meeting with you, so.
Yeah, yeah.
That's right.
That's it, so, anyway, yeah, that's good, that makes sense.
Jack, I just wanted you to reiterate what you said to me about the pipe that broke down near Meadow Lane and Ford Road, so that people over there know what happened.
Yeah, we had a pipe break last night, the Burling Water Company had a pipe break last night, and I'm sure many of you either were inconvenienced or saw it. There was damage under the road, we've had been engineering out, assessing it, and one of the good things was, one of the contracts you just recently approved for earth contractors, we used it. And they were there, well, the good thing was, they were there within 20 minutes, and that actually helps a lot. It prevents, it reduces the amount of damage that's done, because we're able to approach the issue and get it fixed faster. We are going to end up having to replace a couple of driveways, it's been undermined, the roadway. I've talked to Jim Horrible, what we're going to do is, we're going to, you know, we fix the pipe, we're going to clean up the area, and then we're going to put processed gravel there, allow the area to compact and settle for a while, and before we go back, we put the final fix and pavement back into the location.
Would that have resulted in the water pressure?
Oh, you may have saw a slight...
Problem that...
Yeah, and brown water, too. You may have seen some brown water.
I didn't notice brown, I noticed very little water, but that's good, that's...
That's our conservation program.
Yeah. It worked very well last night, it was good.
Could you tell us why something in the road was shut down?
Big truck accident.
Oh, okay, I wasn't aware, I wasn't aware of that one.
The dump truck?
There were pictures, yeah.
Yeah, the dump truck?
Dump truck hit the wires.
Oh, isn't it? You're talking about last week?
Yeah, last week.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Friday, yeah, Thursday was an exciting day. Yeah, Thursday, in fact, interesting, on Wednesday, I was out there at the golf course, meeting at the golf course with John, and as I left, there was a dump truck in an accident. And, okay, so, that's Wednesday. Thursday, the same dump truck is in the second accident, pulls down the wires, pulled down, we had 100 people without, customers without power, the golf course without power, we had to shut down, I believe, I did tell, I contacted them.
Yeah.
We shut down the restaurant, we had to, we talked to the health district, we had to shut down the restaurant, the golf course. The golf course itself was able to remain open. I think John was having some prime pumps afterwards, but, you know, it resulted in power being out of there for a good part of the day.
Somebody needs to rethink their dump truck driving.
Yeah, I think that driver's only works for them.
So, he got it right the second day. He didn't take out enough the first day, he came back and took the rest out the second day, yeah.
He threw his thorough.
Interesting. Yeah.
Okay, special committee reports, I just, we had our, I'll just start off with the, we had the ordinance committee last week, and we have, I guess, one of the things is the golf commission was on it, and we're asking our corporation council to draft the golf commission draft that we can look at, we have a meeting, I think it was, it's August 19th, I think it was, 16? 16?
August 16, 6 o'clock here. Well, no, not here. It'll be in the Board of Ed conference room downstairs.
Okay, so, we can look at that, and hopefully pass it forward to the council. We heard there was a lot of people that came the other night, which was good, a lot of golfers from different organizations, and I think we all determined, I know Peter, I talked to you, I know you didn't make it, but we talked about it, and we're going to make it a, you know, independent commission, and hopefully, we'll get some representation from the different groups that can assist in overseeing the golf course. Obviously, we'll have a town employee as the representative, and, you know, obviously, with the town manager, who's already been, you know, I know, meeting a lot with Mr. Zuck and with the golf pro, to address any issues out there. I think the golf commission will be a nice addition to oversee that, and obviously, with council oversight as well of that, so that's moving forward. I think we wrapped up the, we wrapped up the leash law, right, with some changes, Jennifer, I think, right, did we put those in?
There was, there were several items. You finished up the animal, the agricultural regulations.
Right.[1660.51] Right.
It wasn't under the purview of, of, of the ordinance committee, so a letter was drafted that you're signing, to send to tell them to please reconsider, look at their ordinances, um, and take into account any public comment that was, those made. Uh, the leash law, you want to, you want some minor modifications to, to define what under control means. We requested a, a parking, a review of the parking ordinances, to make them consistent with the state building code, um-
And the sign, right, we're going to post the signs-
Post the signs?
At every entrance, to, by Centennial.
Yeah, we're going to post signs at all entrances, by, defining what, you know, defining what, what, uh, what people could do with their, as far as handling their dogs. Um, peddler, the peddler ordinances, we're going to put a, a peddler ordinance in where you can repeal the, uh, the, the permit given to the peddler, but, as part of that, they have to have an appeal process to come back to the town, and also, as Charlie asked, requested, a way to come back and request a fee, they may be looking at their feedback, or a part of their feedback, that needs to be addressed in, in the, in the ordinance. So, the, um, I know, I, I talked to Jennifer, to Jennifer, briefly today about all these, and that we need to have these ready for the, uh, August sixteenth meeting.